Getting going with the informal and Mr. Tower, would you like to introduce the guests?
Well, I would. I'm not sure who's here by name because I just walked in the door, but I have folks here to talk about the proposed disposable plastic bag fee from Lynn Haven River Now and perhaps other organizations too. And I'm not sure who's going to start first, but I invite them to come to the podium and look forward to their presentation. I think you'll find it very interesting.
Greetings.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Deppi. I'm the advocacy coordinator with Lynn Haven River Now, and I've brought along a supporting cast to field questions after this brief presentation. Christina Tropany is owner of Eco Maniac Company. Karen Forgé is Lynn Haven River Now as executive director. And Mark Swingle is representing the Virginia Aquarium Foundation. So I would like to start off by referring you, I think, in your package as a handout, which we've put together that provides a lot of the precise details about the proposed plastic fee. And I'll just press right along. I guess I do my slides here. So this is an example. This slide is an example of representative kind of damage that plastic bags do to marine life. The aquarium has a wealth of information and history about the ingestion of plastic bags by marine animals, specifically turtles, but also marine mammals, fish, and seabirds. They see it as a food object. They ingest it. And in the best-case scenario, they survive. In the worst-case scenario, they die. And in the middle ground, they get saved by the stranding squad and they do surgery on them out at the aquarium. I would also mention that plastic bags are all over our environment. This last weekend at Clean the Bay Day, anecdotally, my wife was in a cleanup between West Great Neck Road and Great Neck Road on Cape Henry Trail. And there weren't bags in the trees, and there weren't bags in the bushes very much, but most of the bags, and a lot of them, were in the waterway. One of the things we'd like to point out is that not only are they unsightly, but they interfere with our stormwater systems. They clog piping systems. They get involved in pumps and the rest of the system, and they degrade our ability to handle stormwater, which is a big deal, and I don't need to tell you about that. Also agriculture, so much of our city is agriculture, and plastic bags get in machinery, and they also degrade the quality of bags of bales of cotton, as an example. The Virginia General Assembly passed legislation in 2020 authorizing cities and municipalities and counties to enact a five-cent bag fee. It's framed as a tax, but we look at it as a fee because you can't avoid a tax. You can avoid this bag fee if you bring a reusable bag. And so it's more of a, the user has the opportunity to opt out by bringing a reusable bag. It was done in 2020. Because of COVID, we waited, we collectively across the state, municipalities waited approximately a year to sort out whether, all the things that were going on with COVID, whether it was transmitted by touch or so forth. So none of the cities jumped on this until last May, when Roanoke was the first city to pass the legislation. Plastic bags and entities that are affected by this bag are grocery stores, pharmacies, or drugstores, as well as convenience stores and big-box stores that have grocery stores included in them. So these are the cities that have passed the legislation so far, and these all went into effect on January 1st, 2022. Roanoke, Fairfax County, Alexandria, I don't need to read the list to you. Those first five are already in effect, and there are three others who have passed the legislation, one of which will go into effect of January 2023, and Prince William County is looking at it. The important thing, I think, to point out here is in January 2023, the Department of Tax Section will collect four cents of each five cent. The vendor keeps one cent of the five cents that's collected to cover their administrative costs and to perhaps pay for reusable bags. And the other four cents goes to the Department of Taxation and is redistributed to the city. Anecdotally, I'll tell you that DC has had a bag fee in place for 12 years now, and in the first 10 years, they collected $19 million. Fairfax County is anticipating collecting as much as $1 million a year. Now, later in the briefing, I'll get to who that should, what the city does with that is your decision. We have some recommendations, Parks and Rec being one of them, to use it for cleanups, for public outreach, and so forth. I'll get to that in a few minutes in the brief. So who's not affected? Restaurants, food banks, farmers markets, food trucks. And one of the areas that's not affected as well are any plastic bags that are used to wrap food in, like ice cream or meats or things that could be contaminated. So that, you know, that is not affected by it. So this is, I've already been over this briefly, but I wanted to just reiterate that SNAP and WIC is a big emphasis for us as we talk about this. And as other cities have implemented it, there is a significant effort paid to distributing bags prior to the rollout, prior to the beginning or the implementation of the bag fee, to distribute bags to SNAP and WIC recipients, as well as to other underserved communities through libraries, or civic leagues, or other means that we have of distributing bags to the underserved communities, so that they are treated fairly by this bill or this ordinance and not punished by it. Other things are environmental cleanups and public outreach and public education to get the word out about why it's important to reduce bags in our environment. These are some of the organizations that have signed on as supporters of it. We've been on the briefing trail for quite a while, discussing it with folks and getting their perspectives and building that into our pitch as well. Northern Virginia, for example, in Fairfax County, so far, they've got two quarters' worth of data on the impact of the bag fee in Northern Virginia. And they've seen a 70% to 80% reduction in bags in their urban streams and waterways, which is significant and is in perfect alignment with what they have seen in DC, which is about 70% reduction in bags over time in the Anacostia River. TFC Recycling is on this list because they spend a lot of time and a lot of money and a lot of manpower stopping their machinery and getting bags out of the machinery because it binds up their machinery and they have to shut down operations while they clean their gear. So they spend a lot of time and money doing that. So as we move towards questions, I wanted to give you a couple of anecdotes about the first 10 years of the DC bag fee. They've generated $19 million in revenue. They've collected 70,000 pounds of trash and debris removed from their waterways, using some traps that they installed, that they used this money to put those traps in. They've educated 9,700 students through overnight programs and taught them about watersheds and the natural environment and the importance of having a clean and pristine environment. They've also restored 29,000 linear feet of stream banks. So all those have gone into kind of breathing life back into the Anacostia River watershed, as an example. And around here, there are so many watersheds that need to be freed up of plastic bags that we feel it's very important to move on and follow the lead of the other communities in Virginia that have implemented this and clean up our waterways. So pending your questions, that concludes my brief, and we're here to field any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Tower?
I don't have a question. I just want to mention Lynn Haven River Now. For people watching, it may not see, and I do want to mention the names of the other folks that are sponsoring here, TFC Recycling, Surf Rider Foundation, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, Virginia League of Conservation Voters, Eco Maniac Company in Virginia Conservation Network, and extend personal thanks to all of them for their support. This is a community-wide effort. It makes so much sense to me that I cannot imagine anybody not supporting it, but that's why we're here, is to have that discussion too. So I do invite questions or comments from council members on this. But I want to thank the folks that have taken the initiative to bring this to us. We're fortunate that it's been sort of tested in other jurisdictions in Virginia just since 2020 when this was passed, so we have some great examples of how it's working. And want to reemphasize a 70% to 80% reduction in plastic bags in our environment. That would be an enormous benefit to our environment, our community, and I hope everyone will find their way to support it. But I also welcome everyone's questioning to make sure we've got the system.
And Mr. Moss?
I have a question for staff. I'd like to know what J-Larke's evaluation was, and given its alleged metric performance, why the state chose not to just ban bags in the state without having to impose a fee at all versus delegating it to someone else to make the decision. So I'd like to know what J-Larke's assessment was as to why the General Assembly chose not just to ban bags outright and save all of us the fee. So I'd like to know what conclusion they came to. I'd like to have that analysis.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, moving on, council liaison reports. Okay, I just got a quick one. I had the privilege and opportunity to talk to the mayor of the Odessa in the Ukraine, Major Tricona, the other day, just to bring him greetings. We did send a copy of a resolution of support for the Ukraine. You know, Mr. Dehaney and Taylor Adams were with me. I did not make any commitments at all. You know, the mayor did say that they are pretty much under siege and arrest right now and then as moving forward, the potential of a sister-city arrangement, you know, when the dust settles. One of the reasons, Odessa has a lot in common with Virginia Beach. They have a port, they have a very strong Navy presence, and they have a very robust beach system with tourism. One of the items we talked about as a potential was utilizing, you know, Russian youth coming over, you know, once we get our J-1 situation resolved at the oceanfront in terms of a relative, hopefully, steady, you know, pipeline. And part of the sister-cities, if we do go on that thing, is student exchanges and things of that nature. But once again, this was just a perfunctory conversation. No commitments were made, but we're obviously reaching out to the other mayors. And I have reached out to the mayors of Buffalo, Uvalde, and I will be reaching out to the mayor of Philadelphia. Okay? Anybody else? Okay, how about discussion and initiatives? John?
Go ahead, Barbara. I just wanted, I think Flag Day is when we meet, which is next Tuesday. So I think a resolution on Flag Day would be appropriate. And I don't know how we want to handle, I don't know if we want to say, since I hope we would do one every time going forward, that make the plaque, who should get it. But maybe we should start with the oldest school and move on and give the plaque to the oldest school to put in their foyer of their schools. But I think Flag Day is certainly worth being recognized. I did want to comment on how great the two ceremonies were, both Memorial Day. I thought that was outstandingly done. Mr. Mayor, your remarks were outstanding. I thought that was a well-attended event, as well as the remembrance on May 31st. I thought the staff and everyone and all, that was well-done. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you very much, John. Okay, Barbara, and then Linwood.
First, sort of a little project, and I've mentioned this before, but I had a reminder on my way over here today that nothing has been done. And that is the section of roadway of Indian River Road from what we call Steve Finnis Bridge east to the Mounted Patrol is a very dangerous stretch because the roadway goes through a swamp. And particularly on one side, if you get off the pavement at all, you're in water. And there was a car off the pavement today when I came over. Thankfully, it did not, it stayed upright. But one of these times, somebody's going to go off that pavement, and it's going to turn over, and somebody's going to drown. I know that there's not enough area there in a couple of places where there have been numerous times that somebody's gone off to rebuild it. But there must be some kind of markers or barricades that we could put there because you can't see particularly at night in a rainstorm. But even in the middle of the day, like today, if a car is coming in the other direction and you have to get over some, there's no place to get over. It's very, very dangerous, and I hope we can do something. I know I've said this two or three times to different people, and I know it's not an easy fix, but it's a real danger. Another thing, and you do have a draft ordinance that was passed out today that I hope we'll look at next week. I really misunderstood what was in the reconciliation letter at our budget. I thought the item which dealt with using vacancy and associated salary to implement an organizational adjustment to provide additional assistance in certain issues meant that we were approving hiring some additional staff in the city manager's office to help with constituent concerns, because constituent concerns was one of the things we did talk about in the budget as needing something. I had absolutely no idea that we were saying that we were going to approve hiring individual assistants for council members. I think that's a step in a very different direction, and I really think that needs to be discussed. We didn't discuss that at all during the budget hearing. I vaguely remember talking a little bit about something like this at the retreat, but I don't remember it being a discussion during the budget. And if we're going to hire 11, even temporary, volunteer, or whatever they are, assistants for council members, that's something that the public should have the opportunity to have input on, and we really need to talk about things like, where are these people going to work from? What's going to be their job duties in addition to the money? So I would, this resolution, I hope, will be on our agenda in the future, saying that we need to talk about this before it's approved.
Yeah, I believe, you know, we will have a robust discussion on that.
Has it been passed out? I don't have it. I don't see it.
I think it's being passed out, or is it?
I thought you put one everybody's.
Okay, you just gave it to me.
Yes, so I will get copies for everybody and pass it out.
Okay, please, pass the draft out.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else? Linwood?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, we had a little incident down at my hotel on Friday night, and I want to commend city manager, the fire department, and EMS. They did a stellar job. They saved my building from what could have been a lot of damage. And I've called both chiefs and thanked them personally, but they did a stellar job. We sit up here, and we talk about public safety, and we fund public safety, but sometimes it becomes very personal, and it sure was to me and my family on Friday. Thankfully, no one was hurt, and I just can't say enough about their performance. Secondly, so we lost the Patriotic Festival, but the USO was here this weekend and did a great job with the wounded warriors down at the south end of the beach. And it was just a great thing to watch. And originally, the USO was the reason we started the Patriotic Festival. So in my opinion, we kept the best part of that event. And they're going to try to grow it into an even bigger thing for next year. And then third, I know we put out the request for interest and ideas on Rudy Loop, and I was going to see if council thought it would be a good idea to ask the city manager to come back prior to that RFI deadline to give us his plan for how we will proceed from that point, engage the public, and all the things that go into what would happen once we get that. So if the council thinks that's a good idea, I would like to see what the manager proposes prior to the deadline for the submittals.
Okay, Rosemary?
I think that's an excellent idea. This is a very big issue, and it's very important to the public. And it's going to be a big part of what we need to do, is to have public engagement and public input. So Linwood, thank you for bringing that up, and I support this 100%.
Okay, great. Yeah, now, John, before you go, just to let you know, I went to an event with the USO the other day, and they are highly motivated, that they really want to do something positive at the beach and maybe even backfill with an entertainment venue or something like that to work collaboratively with the city and then have a, they were talks of a Military Appreciation Day, that we might be able to get, like even some participation from the Navy or Punggol Airport or anything along the beach that would really, and, you know, we had a, you know, a discussion, you know, with one of the restaurant owners about what a great idea whenever they had any type of military thing where they had people jumping out of perfectly good airplanes and, you know, jets flying over and everything. So, you know, we, as a beach, are coming back. Yep. Yeah. John, and then Aaron.
Two things. One, I hope when he comes back that the no-development gets as much attention and energy given to it in terms of how we will act, so we don't have a repeat of the light rail, as I call it, light fail. But, so everything gets the right attention. And secondly, this gets back to another issue, if I may, I just wanted to comment on that, was on, as you know, effective 1 January, we won't have a state sales tax on food. So I was asking a lot of questions, and Kevin did a great job in responding that the state, and this is what can take some work, working with our legislators, the State Department of Taxation doesn't segregate out and doesn't collect. So the state really doesn't have a way of knowing what sales tax at Target came from food, or Walmart, 50% of their revenues is food, what part of it's food, what part of it's not. So it's very hard to estimate, though there are some rough estimates, but that doesn't go well at banks. But the rough estimate of what portion of sales are really food. So if you were trying to look, what is the fiscal impact of phasing out our local food tax, which I'm very interested in doing, and know what phase we do it, can't be readily discerned from how the taxes are collected. So the state really needs to change its regulations on how they report sales tax so that locality's going to better assess, and so can the state. So I just wanted to bring it up. That's something we, I'm sure VNL and Hampton Road District Planning Commission could help on that, but we need data segregation to understand the fiscal impacts of these changes.
Thank you. Aaron, and then Barbara. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As somebody who gets to pay sales tax in, at the payer's level, I'm not sure what they do with it when they get it, but for all of us who get to collect and pay in the sales tax on the form, it's very clear, because there are different rates for food and non-food. So at that level, there is a distinction.
Okay, thank you. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. Keeping up with the RFI about Rudy Loop. If we can, Mr. Manager, get a community engagement plan for the other RFI for parking in the resort area, I'd like to make sure we get community engagement on that piece as well and see what the plan is for that going forward. The other point I wanted to bring up is that, Mr. Mayor, you did a great job last week at the retirement of Pastor Daniels from Enoch Baptist Church.
And did it back at you for what you've done with the resolution and your comments.
For over 33 years of service to Weston Bayside community and to our community as a whole. It wasn't lost on me that traveling to Enoch Baptist Church, we had to go down Herbert Moore Road that we got a briefing on not too long ago. But traveling down that road, I just wanted to remind council as well as how small that road actually is. I drive a full-size SUV, and my truck alone fits down that road one car at a time. And if there ever was an unforeseen incident where our first responders needed to get down that road, there isn't enough room. So just want to make sure we can pay some attention to that and see how we can mitigate that concern, as well as take care of the opening up or expanding Herbert Moore Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. And Aaron, I just want to thank you for your contributions also with, you know, Dr. Daniels. He had a magnificent send-off, and I think one of the, it just underscores that one of the strength of Virginia Beach are the community-involved people like Dr. Daniels that work tirelessly in the communities. And, you know, I'll tell you what, he is an icon, and he was very much a part of, you know, the success, the major strides that were made with the Third Precinct and building positive police relationships. But once again, you know, one thing that we are proud of, Virginia Beach, where the smallest-large city, and a lot of it has to do with our faith-based organizations that are out there working tirelessly, and I think that was a major factor of why we made it through the COVID as well as we did, keeping communities together. And, you know, once again, giving these folks the shout-out, but also to let us know that we're there for them. So once again, I appreciate your comments. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Bruci?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if, just hearing this discussion, I just wanted to take the opportunity to follow up, of course, agree about all the great things that have been said about Dr. Daniels. But I had a chance to visit the church and observe Herbert Moore Road myself just a few months ago with the pastor, and I agree with what Mr. Rouse said. Not that he needs my support in this moment, but I just want to share with the council and with the public, and certainly with Dr. Daniels, if he's listening, that I heard what he, I heard and I saw the concerns that he elevated there. And there are issues with school buses, public safety, I think pedestrian access to that road. And it's not a big stretch, and I think it should be something, I agree with Mr. Rouse and those in the community who have expressed that it should be something on our radar that I think could be an easy, potentially even collaborative, way to address it. But I think for safety and for accessibility and all this, and support, to support that faith community there, to support that neighborhood, I think we could do better there on Herbert Moore Road. And I just wanted to express my support there as well.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, Michael, I think that underscores that building the positive bridges with the community leaders, with this council and management. You know, they know their community a lot better than we do. And, you know, unless we get out to, you know, we've got a pretty good-sized city here, mileage-wise and 460,000, but once again, I think- but once again, I think this is how, you know, could be useful in determining our priorities. Okay, anybody else at this point? Hey, Madam Vice President, or Vice, oh, good God. You got promoted, Vice Mayor.
Oh, okay. Under ordinance and resolutions, the first is to grant a non-exclusive master lease for the telecommunications services to Southside Network Authority to reuse of the city's public streets and rights of way. I'm sorry.
We have speakers on number one, and number two, and number four.
One, two.
I didn't hear the others.
One, two, and four. And then planning number two.
One, two, and four.
Uh huh. And planning number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yes.
Since you have speakers, I understand it will be pulled, but just so that everyone knows, I passed around to everyone, and I have additional copies for people in the audience today. There are two proposed minor changes to the text of the noise ordinance. The first page has both of those changes for you. They are purely technical changes that relate to how you deliver a civil summons to the person being summoned rather than service. It doesn't change any of the substantive content, but I do believe it was legally necessary to, for that wording change. So when council considers it, if it does after it hears from the public, I would ask that you consider the revised version before you.
Thank you. Okay, so going back, number three, the resolution to name an inlet near Sand Bridge is requested by Councilmember Henley. Is everybody okay with that? Number five, resolution to adopt the updated 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan. Number six, ordinance to donate excess sage, less lethal deployment devices to two North Carolina and one Alabama political subdivision. Number seven, resolution to grant permits to allow emergency medical services agencies to operate in the city, and I don't need to read all of these. Everybody okay? Number eight, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachment into a portion of city-owned property. A is known as Harbor Canal located at the rear of 2329 Leeward Shore Drive to maintain existing wood dock, 10-foot wood piles, wood and steel boat lift, wood ramp, wood floating dock, vinyl bulkhead, and river rock, formerly District Six Beach, and now District Eight. Louis.
I'm sorry?
Okay. A, Dave.
8A.
Under ordinance is.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from anybody about Louis.
I have no objection.
Okay.
B, Harbor Canal located at the rear of 2317 Leeward Shore Drive, regarding maintaining existing vinyl bulkhead boat lift, same thing, District Eight, same one. Everything okay with that one?
I think it's Beach, that's Guy. Isn't that Beach?
I have no objection.
Well, it's District Eight, formerly.
No, that's true.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, C, known as Lake Wesley, located at the rear of 569 Virginia Deer Drive to construct and maintain five wood guide pilings, a floating dock, a kayak launch, and to replace and maintain an existing wood ramp, and four wood pilings and relocate an existing floating wood and dock, District Five, which I haven't heard anything. Guy, have you heard anything?
No, I don't have, no objection.
Okay. Number nine, resolution to rename the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. Everybody okay? Ten, the ordinance to appropriate 1.8 million of fund balance from the General Fund and authorized repayment to the Commonwealth of Virginia regarding pass-through grant from the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund. Number eleven, the ordinance to accept and appropriate, A, $125,000 from the Virginia Aquarium Foundation to the Capital Project 10463 Virginia Renewal and Replacement regarding the refurbishment of the Seal Tank exhibit. B is $3,000 from the VB Home Now, Inc., to the FY 2021-22 Cultural Affairs Department operating budget regarding the assist with expansion of the brush works program.
Okay, open a hearing on planning.
Number one is Reed Enterprises for Liberty Transmissions and Auto Care, Reed Enterprises for modification of proffers to a conditional zoning and conditional permit regarding auto repair garage to 3041 Holland Road, District Two, formerly District Seven, Princess Anne. Barbara?
I've heard no issues, and I don't believe there was anyone at the Planning Commission to speak.
Okay, number two has been pulled. Number three, Ashton Builders, David and Tammy Lee, conditional change of zoning from Ag 1 to Ag 2 to conditional R 7.5 residential regarding seven-matt subdivision of a single-family homes at 2487 North Landing Road, District Two, formerly District Seven, Princess Anne.
There was a speaker at the Planning Commission, but.
No one's signed up so far.
It's been reviewed by Historical Review Board, and also the ITA and others, and they've all indicated that it's in compliance with all of the different districts that it happens to be in, so I think it can go with consent.
I'm voting no.
And number four, Megan Gahoon for a conditional use permit regarding short-term rental at 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 108, District Six, formerly District Six Beach.
Any speakers? I don't know. You have any speakers? I don't know.
I'm sorry.
No objection.
I have just one question, it was, maybe Bobby's here, but there was an email, which I think all of us got, that said this place was operating without requisite approval and was operating as a short-term rental for an extended period of time, and I would just like, that was an accusation, I don't know if it's true or not, but I would like the staff when the time comes to share with us. If that is true, I will be voting no. If it's not true, then I will be voting with the consent of yes.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or considerations of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3, District Four Town Center; public contract, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions for the terms or scope of such contract, where the discussion in the open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to the Section 2.23711A29, Atlantic Park, Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, South Boulevard Cost Participation Agreement; and then personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees for any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1; council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, as well as appointee evaluations, have a motion.
So move.
All right, vote is open.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Louis. I was right in here, thank you.
Okay.
Just have a comment, Nick.
Yes.
On the advice of the city attorney, I will be sitting out on the, not attending this Atlantic Park section of the executive session.
Okay.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you recess into closed session.
Okay, we are recessed into executive. Thank you all very much.